So we are live. Hello. Those awkward starting moments.
Fun starting moments.
Yes.
Let's share a screen and see a video. Here we go. All right. Awesome video there. So, welcome to the Community Roundtable here with Charlie Rowe for Alder in District 3. We're here today to celebrate a time to talk about the community and have you ask your questions, share information about the election coming up April 6th. And without further ado, Charlie, so exciting to have you here.
Thank you, Anne, for hosting me. I am really excited for the opportunity to let my neighbors know why I'm running and who I am. Row for Alder in District 3. And there's that feedback.
Because of Facebook. Let me close Facebook, maybe?
No, it's on my end. We're good.
Oh, okay, good. Okay, so do you want to jump right in and start answering questions, the burning questions?
Yes, let's do that.
Okay, okay.
Anybody here?
Before anyone gets here, well, maybe before we get started, could you tell us why you are running for Alder person in District 3?
Absolutely. I think that is the number one question that I'm being asked this campaign. Very simply put, I saw a need for a true democratic voice, a bipartisan representative. I have been working grassroots for my community and for the causes, and I've been attending common council meetings. I felt like our Alder was serving her own purposes and making a political stepping stone out of our district. There's a lot of things that she has supported that I also have supported and worked for, but there's a lot of things that she didn't vote the way she said she supported or abstained in times when our district needed her to step up. So when I saw that nobody else was running, I felt compelled to, I've been saying a lot, stand up in our bean patch and say, this is enough. Our time is now. If we are ever going to change our common council, which affects our city, if we're ever going to change our governing forces and institutions, it begins right here at home. And I believe that I am a candidate that can meet that need in a truly equitable way. I have the experience. And so I began knocking on doors. My neighbors nominated me, and now I'm in the race.
Yeah, so exciting. I mean, I got involved. I saw your website. It's, it's, it's in the chat here. It's charlieroweformadison.com. And I started, you know, looking at more information about you. I saw you're interested in public safety, diversity, inclusion, true public servant, listening to people, worker protection, equitable access, so many things that got me excited and wanting to serve and.
All the buzzwords are there.
So good, so good. And I was just reading everything and seeing how involved you've been in community and your history. And one of the things that I know is a big issue in your area is the question of should Madison prioritize the bus rapid transit system? What do you think about that?
So I, one of my memories that I've shared a lot was standing out on Van Ron Road, waiting for the bus to come pick me up to go to Senator LaFollette. That type of service is no longer coming to Madison. Yes, our students are being picked up, but our workforce is not having the service they need to get out to some prairie or to forests, our local municipalities are not having the regularness of the buses. We need bus rapid transit to move forward. We need to see that come to the east side. Very often, these things somehow skip around us. They go northwest or south. And if you look at the bus lines, that's where they're strongest. I left Madison for a gap, and when I left here, I moved to Washington State. I was appalled at their bus system in my city because I was used to how efficient Madison was. And it is no longer that way. I'm very glad. Many of my friends that live on the north and west side can have that claim that I take transit. It wouldn't work for a lot of us here to get to work on time. I've had to ride the bus and been continually late. It was an issue with my employer. So I know that we need to increase the regularity of our buses. We need to see the bus lines increased, but it also plays into our sustainability plan. The more cars we get off the road, the less carbon there is in the air. And we can meet those promises that our city made about net zero carbon.
Yeah, thanks for thinking about that. That's often missed. So that's awesome. What do you think about the raise that the current common council wants to give themselves?
Yeah, that's a big question and a mighty big raise they're asking for. This is part of my platform of public servants that goes along with the need for public services to be increased here. I do truly believe that our government should be a service industry, if we want to call it that. And we have seen now in our nation, in our county, in our state and city more than ever, what happens when politicians play with our rights, with our votes, with all of our lives. And so it's one of these things that I am going to rein myself in here and keep it a smaller focus, but um.
But you, so the raise that, so what would your vote be on the raise?
I'm going to, I'm trying to say it eloquently and diplomatically, but I am who I am, and I believe in transparency. So I'm going to tell it to you like it is, and I won't stumble all over the place. It is absolutely ridiculous. So it's a public office, a service office, and it has been listed as part-time. $12,950, 650, whatever it is, is a very good part-time salary. We have service industry workers that are still working at less than $3 per hour, hoping that they have ethical employers to make it meet minimum wage. Most of the people, including our current Alder, jumped on this. What we're talking about is going to full-time, 435% increase in wage to be almost $65,000 a year. What that does is put a lot of money in the pockets of a very few politicians. It reduces the representation of the people by 10. That's 50%. We have 20 common council members. They're going to take 10 of them away. Lindsey Lemer said in, I believe, our wart debate, it is a hard job. Alder should be full-time. I agree with that. Should we raise the wage? I don't know if it goes to full-time. Let's talk about raising it maybe to what Madison says is a livable wage. It's definitely not the $36 an hour they're asking for. And what is most notable to me about what they're asking for is that people like our current Alder here in District 3, while they're not saying that they defund police, they have publicly said that if they were going to reappropriate funds, they would be okay with it coming to an increase in common council salary. I think that's blatantly wrong. I think that is a misappropriation of public funds. So I'm going to stop right there. I think you have the idea.
Well, and that's a lot of information that I think most people don't know that right after that. So you've been involved in, you know, your local community and government for a long time, and you're aware of these things. You're extremely educated and involved. And so number one, you know what's going on. And number two, if you're elected, what would you do to be sure that you're hearing all the views of the people in your district?
Absolutely. Um, this is one of the things I kind of took issue with recently with the heavy research, I'll say, that went into the Wisconsin State Journal's endorsements. I asked them why they simply copy pasted some of my opponent's accomplishments without actually looking into them. And one of them was this topic of how do we currently reach the constituents versus how will I? So she has a very common thread that she has this great blog and this newsletter, but I only see it through my neighborhood association leader, Barbara Davis, posting it on the Rolling Meadows site. Or I only see it if I have access to wifi or to get online. And I'm able to navigate that to go to the city website, find common council, find her page. And it's pretty much copy pasted from everything I can find in the other sources already put out there. I'm going to make it different. I'm going to do what I've already been doing. I'm already knocking on your doors. I'm already hosting community inclusive events. But I want to continue that with open office hours. One of the things that I have made as a promise in this is to have a, to keep my website open as a form of communication, to keep a separate phone line that is dedicated for only my constituents reaching me. These are things that aren't happening in my neighborhood. You really have to know what's going on in your city government. You have to be aware of what an Alder is to know to even reach out to your Alder. Many of the people that I spoke with, they were like, I'm so happy that I'm even learning what this office is that I didn't even know I had somebody to go to. So clearly, the methods of communication that exist now are only working for those who have been made aware of them. And we need to do a lot more boots to the ground and getting to the doors to say, here's how you reach me. And then if they're calling us, answer the calls, not just answering the calls of the ones that live at the right addresses.
That is, yes, awesome. And I mean, it takes a lot of guts to do this job and to try and go for this. And so I'm just stoked that you have this experience of having the guts to take on big issues and actually listen to people and work with people. I love to hear all of these avenues that you're opening up. It's very exciting. I just want to remind everyone who's joining that if you want to volunteer or donate to the campaign, if you look in the chat, you can go to charliroweformadison.com. And remember to vote April 6th. And you can find your voting place by going to myvote.wi.gov. And you can vote, you can register to vote by mail up until the 17th of this month. And then remember, it's April 6th to vote. And so we're back at answering some questions here that people have submitted. And one is going back to your promise to think about our environment, which is such a huge thing that seems to be put by the wayside a lot. But in 2017, a common council passed a resolution to establish community-wide energy and carbon goals of 100% renewable energy and net zero carbon emissions. And so as an Alder, what actions will you take to ensure that these goals are established within your tenure?
I think one of the things that we really need to act on in our city is something that we've been saying we're acting on. We've been throwing money at, and the DNR is telling us we are doing nothing. And that's looking at the hazardous waste from Starkweather Creek. That's not in my district, but it heavily affects the people in my district. And right now, you may not know, but our city, our county, the airport, actually National Guard there, we were ordered to clean that up back in the late 80s. And we have ordered a, let's just call it a trial biomat to be placed in there. It's been proven it's not working. And so now our city wants to throw hundreds of thousands of dollars at another study. I think it's time to do what the DNR said and clean our environment. And we're kind of piddling around in these things. Another big issue for my district is the F-35s. I was against them. I'm against them. I'll be against them. It's something that our mayor has allowed to come to our city. And now it's more of an issue of mitigating the effects, mitigating the environmental damage, mitigating the real everyday effects. Our children are on the playground, and they're going to be suffering from the decibels. And we're going to have to figure out ways to protect our children's hearings and to save our waterways. There are so many issues that District 3 faces that are just matters of environmental racism or injustice. It's in our air. It's in our water. It's the modes of transportation. And there's a lot of these things that common council has been saying they're going to do, but it's really time to act on the things that are being already presented.
Hey, awesome. And then the question that comes up too is about, you know, who is supporting you and what are, who are your allies in running? You already talked about why you were running, but can you talk about why maybe you haven't shared so many of your endorsements?
Absolutely. That's a really good question. Because I do, I look at my opponent's page, Lindsey's page, it's full of names and organizations. I look around the campaigns. I know what it is. I know what politics is. I know what it is to pick up a phone and say, hey, I'm running for office. You met me at this networking event, or I've been working with you for a year, and I know we don't get along, but could you put your name on my roster? I know what that is. It's politics. It's something we need to get away from. I don't want big money. My opponent has a lot of money. And that means that she's obligated to make a lot of decisions, whether it's what she says she supports or not. And there's a lot of heavy money behind these endorsements sometimes that I don't believe should be in a true democracy, not at, not at electing representatives of the people. We have a video that we're going to show at some time to begin to release some of my endorsements. I have political parties that have endorsed me. Some of them, I've had to have some conversations with, like, we don't agree here. What does this mean? One of them, I took a risk. I thought some of the conservative members of my community may say, wait, who's that? I don't want anything to do with them, but I've wanted them to see me. I wanted them to hear me, to get to know me. Before I said, I agree with some of the platforms of these organizations. Because where we meet is on my platforms of equality, inclusivity, environmental protections, worker protections, police protections, just public safety. So you're going to start seeing who's behind me, but it means that they know me. They truly, truly know me. And I said, no, I did some, I had some opportunities to be endorsed, and what it meant was that my people would lose their voice. So I said, no. So you're going to start seeing them, but that's why I've kind of been a little atypical in this.
Yeah, I mean, I remember one of the first things that I was excited about with your campaign is that you are really truly bipartisan and that you're really thinking about everyone, not just, you know, only a select few, but really the inclusivity. Can you maybe just speak to the bipartisan aspect of your campaign?
Absolutely. Um, common council is a body of government that is, my battery is giving me that warning. I'm panicking. It is supposed to be a true democracy. It's supposed to be a collective voice that represents every strata of socioeconomics of every intersectional place that we meet as citizens. And we don't have that right now. We don't have that in our district. We have somebody who, I'll just say, their former campaign coordinator from their previous campaign, when they got elected, reached out to me immediately, and they said, this is who this person is. This is what they're doing. Just be who you are. And I am too right for some and too left for others, but it's because I am compassionate. I believe that listening, I really want us all to succeed. And I don't believe that we do that by going to either party. And I don't believe that is what the government at common council level should be. My former, my former bandmate once told me that if everybody was in there playing the same note, I would sometimes squeak this way or squeak that way because I felt like something needed to be pulled from being too one-way. And I don't think that's ever left me. I get a little squeaky when I see that something's just going the wrong way.
Yeah, well, and that's what we need, right, is someone to actually speak up and have the guts and the grit and the passion for people. So I'll let you plug in there while I remind everybody where to vote, how to do all of this. So remember that it's voting April 6th for your, for Charlie Rowe Alder in District 3. If you are unsure how to vote, remember you can go to myvote.wi.gov. And they have everything in there, where to vote, what district you're in. If you've got friends in District 3, remind them to vote for Charlie Rowe. And if you want to volunteer, donate, or get involved in this campaign of real, a real wonderful human being to go to bat for you and to actually listen and opening up all these avenues for you to connect with her, then you would go to charliroweformadison.com. And yes, we've got more questions that we're saying here, Charlie, finding out. If you want to add your questions, you can simply go into the chat here at the meeting and let me know. And let's see, we have a question here. Well, this is probably one of the biggest ones that people want to know is, how will you work to stop crime in our neighborhoods?
I think that, um, I don't want to say crime is the number one issue of my district because it's that umbrella of public safety, but the trespassing upon my neighbors and myself is at a new high. It's at a dangerous level. And I really do believe that we need to work with our police force, calling upon them when we know that they'll do what they do best, which is intervening in violent situations or situations that could be a public safety hazard. But I also want to look at re-establishing groups like the Good Neighbor Project. We used to have community watch programs that would, you know, simple little orange pieces of paper. When I would walk by houses in high school, they'd have that hand in the window that would say, this home is watching the neighborhood. This home's watching the community. And I believe District 3, we want that. We want a sense of community. We want a sense, not that our neighbors are looking in through our windows to call, you know, somebody honest, but that they're watching if our garage doors open and, you know, they'll get on, maybe knock on our door and say, hey, your door's open or something. And I really believe that reinstilling a sense of community is also going to bring about that sense of ease with communicating with one another. And I think that's the number one level. Our neighborhood association leader, Barbara Davis, posted recently a picture that said, it's 9:00 PM. Have you done your, you know, garage door check? You're at this check? I thought these are the things that we don't really need government to step in. We, as a community, can begin to watch ourselves, and that's going to tell these people, it's not allowed here. I think we've been broken as a community, but then we also, getting away from that and more to the institutions that we look to, we do need to look to some of these mental health initiatives that are going to offer an alternative to calling the police. We need to look into calling some of these people that can come to our house so that situations don't become something other than they should. There's so much involved in this, but I think that working with the police department, working together as a community, and then working with the organizations that already exist, it's going to help us a lot to just put the, you're not welcome here, sign up.
Right. I think that that's what's most exciting is that you, as an educator and someone who's extremely educated about not just what the issues are, but the actual solutions that we could bring forth to this is what's really exciting and thinking of things holistically, not just putting Band-Aids on things. Or like you said, thinking more about preventing it on a, on a bigger level is really exciting and so.
Absolutely. It's one of the things, if, to go under that big umbrella, it's the intersectionality of all of our lives right there. How do we all, from where we are at, get to a place where we are compassionate toward one another? We are nonjudgmental in our dealings with one another? And how do we protect one another? And one of the ways we do that is by voting in candidates that will listen to each voice. It's, it's meeting the people where that, if the criminals are coming from our neighborhood, we've got to take a look at what's happening in our neighborhood that is causing these people to think that not only is this okay to do to your fellow citizens, but why is there a need? I don't think kids are out joyriding because there's a need. I think we need community centers. We need mentorship programs. We need stronger educational access. Because as great as we are doing, we can do more to help the kids that are at risk that end up in these situations. If they're coming from our community, the village is failing them.
Wow, that's, it's so powerful to hear that being said right now. It's so important. I'm just gonna come to a question that we have from Tom in your district here. Saying, asking, what are your real thoughts then? After you just spoke a little bit about this, but he says, what are your real thoughts on the Madison Police and the call to defund them?
My real thoughts? Whoo, you got time. So I think it's a little bit ridiculous to simply say, take all of our police protections away. I understand why the word defund police, why that phrase was chosen. I think that there's been some, not backpedaling by any means, but changing of the way we present the idea of re-appropriating funds. Because when I look at the police reports that our current common council commissioned, it shows us our current officers have zero accountability for where they are when they're on the clock. So I compare that to, we don't have enough officers to meet the need. Are we sure that they're all out there? I have also dealt very personally, because it was me, with a, a mental health officer on the Madison Police Force coming to my home on a mental health call and not announcing themselves. I have a problem with that. I have a problem with some of the things that have happened in our city, no doubt. If you are familiar at all with my story, I have a very large problem with why our Madison Police Force is accountable to nobody but themselves in the Fire Police Commission, where citizens like myself, um, I was bleeding and broken. My life completely turned upside down. The city is fully aware that the police who were called to the scene had evidence. They had the confirmation from my attacker. And in their own reports, they said they broke numerous standard of operating procedures. I think that we need to take a look at our police force and ask ourselves, what's going on here? I've heard from people in our district, a wife of a current police force officer said, I, when I was vetted, told them that my husband has racist tendencies. I told them he should not be on the force. He is. We need to take a look at our force and say, what do we want them to do? What are they best at? We need to make sure that the officers that are risking their lives every day for us, the ones that are there when we need them to be, the ones who are protecting us and serving us, that their needs are met. But there are funds there that could be absolutely re-appropriated to the Oversight Commission. I would love to see them receive salary from our city. We know we need mental health officers, whether that goes back under the Madison Police umbrella or a different committee, I don't know. I think we need to take a look at the budget and decide where we as citizens want that money going because it seems to us like they're not accountable for all of it right now.
Yeah, well, thanks for, you know, your courage to really be honest about this because we have to be honest about what the actual problems are here. And I hear your bipartisanship coming out and saying, we need a police department, but we need it to be equitable for people. And we also need to take care of the root reasons why we're having these problems. It's not just, you know, jail. It's not just those things that we have mental health issues, and we need those professionals to come in. So I'm really hearing you. I'm so just excited to have this conversation and to hear your thoughts about it. It's really refreshing to hear that from an Alder person, so.
But hopefully, hopefully one. So Annie, if I may, um, yeah, hopefully. I'm watching on Facebook, kind of keeping track of questions coming in there. I don't want to miss Bonnie Rowe. Love your last name, Bonnie. Spelled different, though. So she asked here, um, if I think that we should equip our police with body worn cameras. This is something that is currently being discussed in Common Council. It's being recommended. There are studies all over the place. We know that with their current use, the way police departments are current currently releasing the video, they are not helping the citizens. They are not, they are very often when used in court, they're helping the officers, but they're also heavily redacted. So what sense does that make, right? That's exactly what I'm standing here for is calling for transparency in our governing institutions. I can tell you, as I just referred to, had police cameras been worn on St. Patrick's Day four years ago at, it's called the Atwood now, but the former Mr. Roberts. I would not have had to fight to be heard. I would not have had to stand in Common Council and address the Alder of that district. I would not have had to go into the former Police Chief Cobal's office and in the middle of a PTSD tactics PTSD attack, explain to him how the Madison Police Department lost my testimony twice because it would be on video. I am in favor of it for that fact, but with full disclosure to the public, with full availability to the public. Because without body cameras, we would not know about George Floyd. We would not know about the countless lives. You don't know about what happened to me because there wasn't a body camera. My life was turned upside down. The city has nothing. The police force has nothing for me. Mr. Roberts got remodeled. The neighborhood is, Common Council said, you don't even have to tell the Neighborhood Association. They would know what happened to the people who got bottles thrown in their faces by the owner. They would know what happened to the service worker, the service industry workers there that day when their boss threw bottles at them. I do believe they're needed, but only as a tool with full disclosure.
Wow, I'm just like, haven't heard all of your stories and I'm just like, I'm just so sorry that that happened to you and and at the same time, just like amazed by your courage to not just like speak about that, but actually run for an older person and make changes about that. That's what I'm most excited about. You doing this is just like, it takes a lot of guts and grit and courage and strength. And if you can come out and talk about these things and run for, like, I can't imagine what you could do in those meetings to be able to speak to this actual issue that's going on and and be a real force for those people who are struggling. Not just the people who are doing great, which is awesome. We want that, but to make sure that we're living in a community where we, everyone is equitable and our, you know, our neighbor is okay and 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 taking care of our whole community. So I'm super excited about this.
Yeah, it it it, that whole story, I mean, if you want to know, it is on my YouTube channel. It on, I did a whole story about with Madison Story Slam, because it was a community, one of them, I love storytelling and it was a community that gave me a platform when my own city wouldn't hear me. My own Common Council turned me away. City Attorney turned me away. And it was actually through this experience and demanding to be heard by my city, demanding justice. And if I wasn't going to get it, just letting my citizens, my fellow citizens know that this happened, this is happening here. It was this experience. Like I said, I marched into the, you know, former chief of police's office, but I marched into our for our mayor's office and they were in transition at that time. But I met Gloria Reyes, who is, um, you know, she leads our Board of Education currently, former police officer. She's the founder of Adelante, which is a BIPOC candidate training and support organization. She's just a phenomenal leader in Madison. And I went in there and I was like, this is who I am. This is what I need. This is what's done. I want to be heard. And being in transition, it wasn't her place, but she took time. She pulled me aside. She said, I, I, I need, you need me. And at the end of our conversation, she said, I wish people would like you would run for office. We need people who aren't afraid to charge in. We need people who aren't afraid to say, this is truth. And if I'm dirty in it, let me just say what's true so that it's known. And I had already been honestly considering it before she said that. Because I see the need for a bipartisan representative, but it was when she said that. And when I didn't see anybody else stepping up to bring a democratic voice to our district that I entered the race and that experience of being a citizen absolutely not only unheard, but oppressed and going from one Madison to another Madison made me really want to create a Madison that was equitable.
Yeah, I mean, I think all, every most people are fed up with, you know, politicians who just just play politics and hearing your story and how you are just a fresh voice that's actually dealing with not just one part of Madison, but the whole part that's causing all, you know, all sides of it that's causing us to have these, you know, miscommunications and misunderstandings and you're bringing to light all sides. So that brings me to ask you then, you know, if how do you feel like you would be a better older person than what we have now?
Right. So you're not in my district, so I know the we is somebody.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, so I, I mean, I referred to it. I don't know Ms. Lemmer personally. I obviously, you know, calls are being made, discussions are being had. I have heard a lot from a lot of different voices that line up with what I believed her reason for being in office was. Current Alders have reached out to me and said, you know, we were really cheering you on. Do you want me to endorse you again? Going back to you don't really know me, so I don't think that's fair, but when people on council are saying, hey, you know, we, we see that your district needs a voice. I know that I'm in this for the right reason. One of the biggest issues that I was myself honestly not even aware of until the night that I knocked on doors for my nominations was the fact that she ran for a completely different office in the middle of her first term as our Alder. And hearing that, I I listened to my neighbor and they were very, they were very upset by this. They said, we voted her in. And in the middle of learning how to do the job, in the middle of supporting things, she runs for state assembly when she's just getting her feet wet. And I was like, wow, yeah, you're not working for us if you're in the middle of another campaign. So I began to look into this. I began to look into her statements. What does she support? I looked into what she voted for. They're not always the same. I support so many things, but do I act on them? Do I put my stamp on them, right? So I began to notice statements that I didn't agree with. They were conflicting. I looked into this running for a different office. It really stuck with me. And I think it is a very big tell on why she is in this race. When I looked into her running for assembly in the middle of her first term as District Three Alder, I found out that tens of thousands of dollars of this campaign were personally funded by her. I am all about candidates supporting their own campaign. One of the very few promises I've made my constituents is that I'm not going to ask for your campaign donations. I'm not going to call you and say, give me money, give me money. If you want it, my links are up there. If you want to donate, I thank every one of you who has donated. But I'm in this because I believe in it. And I, my first promise was to apply my first stimulus, which was my third donation, two others beat me to it, but I put my own money in because I believe in it. Not because I'm going to pay to get an office, to get a job. So when I see that half over, I believe, tw- almost twenty four thousand dollars, it's coming out of her own pocket. Then I listened to statements she's made in this race. She is absolutely for the Alder raise that we discussed earlier of raising a four hundred thirty five percent raise increase. She's for reappropriating funds from the police department to the Alder salary. Because she said in an interview, the job of Alder should be full time. It's a difficult job if you're going to reach the people and work hard for them. They should be paid better to do that job full time. Lindsay is right. It should be a full time job and they should be paid appropriately. But I'm wondering how she is serving us and why she's asking for more money from the city if she has tens of thousands of her own dollars to invest in a campaign that she's running in the middle of her first term when she's supposed to be working for the people. If you're struggling already in your first term because you're running for a different office and you're telling your constituents it's hard for you to serve them, maybe you shouldn't be in office. Maybe somebody who has been doing the job should be doing the job, and I'm that person. The other place that I have really had me personally, why I think I'm the better candidate. The other area is really coming down to something she said recently when she was asked how she would address racial inequities and what she doing about that. I read her statement. She said that she, part of her dealing with racial inequities is recognizing her role of privilege and coming to terms with what her privilege means. She said that she is mentoring a BIPOC candidate for her future seat. She says that she is working with the BIPOC community. But I'm a BIPOC candidate running right now qualified. I do know that she is working with BIPOC candidates in other districts. And I know from going to those doors and from the calls I've been making. If you're unfamiliar, BIPOC is a Black Indigenous people of color. They don't feel heard here. They don't feel heard here. And so to sit there from a place of privilege and say, I believe I have the right to mentor my next candidate and I will handpick a BIPOC one is such a totally deaf statement that I don't believe that somebody with that view is going to be able to properly address racial inequities and injustices. Because if you put all of this together, we have somebody who from nothing more than a communications background, working for, I believe, Sub Zero, got into the race because her party paid to support her. So she's been in this. Halfway through learning the job, she wants another higher office. She's willing to pay out of her pocket to get it, but then says, I need a four hundred thirty five percent increase from my city because this job is hard. And I am so aware of what's going on in the divisions of my city with the struggles of the Blacks and the Latinos and the Hmong in my district, with the homeless and the impoverished in my district, that when I decide to leave this seat only, remember now, she's only in this race because she didn't get the other seat. Otherwise, I wouldn't have competition and I'd be the Alder. She's only in this seat now because she didn't win Assembly. It's the only reason she had to rerun. So she's saying she will hand select a BIPOC candidate to give the community, but they have one, Lindsay. They have me. I am the better candidate. I'm the better representative. I would not have entered this race if I didn't see the need and if I did not have the heart and commitment and belief that I would serve these people better than we are currently being served.
Wow, I mean, and then just looking back at your history of being an educator, being in our city schools, being an administrator, you know, a a teacher and and knowing what, knowing actually what we need and having experience like you have on all aspects of our law enforcement and our community. This is just such a rich opportunity to really speak to actually what we need, both from the preventative education piece and from how we can we deal with, you know, our current system and what are the ills of it? It's just a rare opportunity, I think, to to even have someone run that has your experience. So I mean, I just can't say enough about that. So one more hard harder question, and then I wanted to get a little bit more get to know you personally. And then, you know, we've got a few more minutes. I cannot see the Facebook question, so if there's more of those, we'll we'll take those in just a minute. But just a reminder to everyone, if you want to get involved with Charlie's campaign, then you can volunteer or donate at Charlie, C H A R L Y, Rowe with an E R O W E for the number four, madison.com. You can also make sure that you're registered to vote April sixth in the my myvote.wi.gov and you can find out everything, your voting place, register everything, see if you're already registered. All that stuff is there. And let's see, and so now I just want to go to one more kind of hard hitting question and then we'll find out more about Charlie and answer any more of your questions that are coming in. But you know, you've touched on some of the things that your competitor hasn't really talked about, which is more of the racial issues, the police issues, and those are issues that we see on TV all the time and that a lot of people are uneducated about. And so you're even, the way that you speak about it here is just helping to educate people what is actually going on and what can be done. So my next question is, so many poor live in the district, in District Three. How, what would you do to address that, this issue?
Poor, I mean, isn't that ninety nine percent of us these days, you know? We definitely have a lot of members of our community that are homeless. And we are working. I know that there in the district that is right on the other side of the street from where I live on Milwaukee Street, which is also the border. Former Karminta, it is being, you know, turned over, working with the City and Salvation Army to provide housing for families. That is going to be instrumental in sheltering these families. We are also talking about turning the property over by East Town Mall, the former Savers, into a men's homeless shelter. The possibility of that and what that means, if it should be there, if they're going to get services there, if they're going to have access to things that they need there and how that plays into the community. So addressing the needs of the poor in this district is a huge another umbrella. We definitely need to meet the needs of our homeless citizens. I would love to see programs like Madison's Open Refrigerators come here where we have a few refrigerators. I've offered to plug one in and pay for the electricity because we need to do more. If we're talking about the many of us who have gotten these eviction notices or we're chronically late these days on our rent or and the insecurities of our homes are just looming over us, then we need to, we need to address that in District Three. We need to make more COVID nineteen recovery plans for our city that really address not so much needing the business needs. The business needs are more or less being met by the government at this point. We need to meet the citizens. We need to offer them programs and assistance to keep their homes. If the ban on evictions is going to go away, Madison needs to do more. We need to put it back into place. I know my neighbors are facing food insecurities. They're facing shelter insecurities. If it's dealing with the families who can't afford Wi-Fi to stay in touch, if the only way you can get ahold of your Alder is online and you can't afford to be online, folks, then we need to do more. I don't know if a lot of people know, but Madison currently has the ability to have free Wi-Fi for all of us. That means that the people who can pay for that lightning fast speed are going to be on the same level as the people who got to trek or jump on their bike or bus to get to the library to access that. We need to address these things and talk about them and make it a more equitable city for all of us. I'm going to jump on there too and go back to something. If it means helping the poor children, of course, with their education, but also have a value in our community, have the ability to thrive in our community, then we need to offer that to them as well through programs and initiatives. I I want to classify our children here as a group unto themselves that are not having their needs met.
And you would know, having been in the schools and educating and administrating and it's just, it's extremely exciting to have you running right now and it, you know, with everything that you've been through to have you as a real human being that sees so many sides and has direct experiences, a rare. to have you as a real human being that sees so many sides and has direct experiences, a rare opportunity for your district to have an actual, you know, person running for for, um, alder, because so often we have career politicians who are in it for, like you said, money or for, you know, whatever their, their ego goals are, and they're not thinking about the underserved people or or even understand all the levels that are actually needed in the community. I think this is a very rare opportunity for people to vote for, for a true community member and a champion of the community. And so we've gotten a few left. I wanted to just make sure you, um, if there's any other questions from Facebook that we're taking those. And then, um, have you answered if we, is there anything else about you as a person that we haven't asked you yet or that we might not have been able to talk about?
Wow, I always feel like I'm such an open book all the time, being a storyteller and a musician and a creative in the I always feel like everybody knows me. But I think, I think that's a mistake that our current alder is making is that everybody gets the information, you know? Um, it's just not the case. So some things about me, um, some of the things that I've been asked that haven't come up yet are about my former experience, you know, um, in government or in politics. And one of the things that I, you'll see it in the media is my answer is it was one of the common council meetings that I had attended where the former mayor Paul Soglin was presiding and I had the opportunity to remind him that I got the opportunity to serve with him on the Student Affairs Committee for the Madison School Board years ago. That experience, um, listening and discussing and having critical but conflicting conversations, um, for our students was a phenomenal experience. And then literally taking maybe not what I thought, not what I thought needed to be, but taking the voices that I was supposed to represent and coming to a diplomatic reply and being able to vote on that. Um, that was a life-changing experience for me. Not only did it establish my, um, commitment to being a true citizen of my city, but it also gave me a an awareness of the real power that lies at the municipal level to affect the everyday lives of the people in Madison. So maybe I didn't know, but got to do that. And I'm going to jump on that, tell you two other fun facts. Um, I waited out in the lobby of the what is it now? The, what is it? The Wisconsin Hotel on State Street. Yeah, I sang with a man playing piano there, waited for the Reverend Jesse Jackson to conclude his speech so that I could then interview him for the paper, my school paper. So because I did that, pretended to be somebody I wasn't, until he got there, he took me out to eat at the Greek restaurant on State Street. I learned the Greek lambada. And, um, he signed my Wisconsin State Journal that night, so that's number two.
Awesome. Well, we out of time for today for the rest of it, but I just feel so honored to be here with you, to support you in your candidacy, just you are so inspiring me as a person to tell the truth and to think about how to care for our entire community and to educate myself about what that means, not just our own personal interests, but our entire community and what it needs. And I just think you're a rare person to be running right now. Um, it's just especially when we got our working class, it's so hard to even think about doing another thing and you have the guts and the commitment to our community to be a working class person and take on this huge responsibility. And with the education that you have of understanding exactly what we need and being able to speak to it and and the experience to have already had the guts to stand up and speak to this and that you've listened, you listen to what people want, you're opening up all these channels for people to get involved and connect with you. And you're committed to both sides of, you know, conservative and liberal, which is again, real, a true, a true bipartisan is very rare. And that I really feel like you have the ability to solve problems because you can see the holistic issues and not just personal interests or what has kept us all, you know, in our bubbles, but you're saying, um, you're not a career politician, that you are someone that's actually, you know, standing aside of us to help as part of the community. So I just want to thank you for running and thinking.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. I really appreciate it. I I, I, um, know one of the things that people are wondering is if I am truly bipartisan. And one hundred percent because you don't get to you don't get to pick sides when you're representing the collective. It's not about me.
Wow, that's awesome. I just want to remind everyone and thank everyone for coming. And I wanted to remind you that if you are not registered to vote, please register to vote April sixth uh, in person. You can still register to vote by mail and by going to myvote.wi.gov. And you can volunteer for Charlie's campaign, donate, get involved. I mean, this is amazing opportunity to support Charlie. It's W W dot Charlie Rowe, number four, Madison dot com. And you can just Google Charlie Rowe and it'll come right up. Thanks again, everyone for being here and Charlie, just we're really, really blessed to have you.
Well, I really appreciate the time and all the hours. Thank you so much. We will hopefully be your alder. Bye.
Vote, everybody. Take care. Thanks, Charlie.
Bye.